Mayor Pro Tem Greg Newton, lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation of draft fiscal year 2016-2017 operating budget.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Before we go into the presentation, a couple of housekeeping items. Just a note that the Finance Officer Gina, who has been leading the efforts in compiling the budget, is not here this evening. Her brother passed away and she's not able to attend this study session. But she'll be back next week. I just want to let you know the information that we're going to be presenting to you is going to be presented at very high level. But you have a copy, you should have a copy of the draft budget document and we may refer to that from time to time. The idea is for you to follow through with the presentation. You are welcome to take home that budget document and study it and there will be another session of this study session two weeks from today. With respect to the budget process itself, this process has been ongoing for the last two months, maybe longer. During that period of two months, we have had several budget reviews internally, among staff, between the City Manager and staff and the Finance Director. The purpose of those internal reviews to ensure that the budget has been scrubbed, meaning that we want to make sure that the budget only contains those items that are essential to maintain service levels. This budget does not include new programs. The process itself will be ongoing until the budget is adopted sometime during your first meeting in June or your second meeting in June, depending on how it progresses. Tonight's discussion is going to be primarily focused on the operating budget. The next two weeks, we'll be discussing the capital improvement program budget. And if for some reasons we don't cover all the materials we intend to cover this evening, then we'll carry it over to that following study session on May 18th. With that. Okay, just again, we begin this budget by just taking a look at what we are going to go over with you this evening. First of all, we're going to take a look at the FY 2016-2017 operating budget highlights for all the major operating funds. We'll take a look at the summary of 2016-2017 general fund revenues and expenditures. We'll take a little closer look at multi-year trend information that pertains to the general fund revenue expenditures and fund balances. We will do the same thing for the water fund as well as the sewer fund. Then we'll also discuss the gas tax fund. And then, following all of that, the department heads will have an opportunity to provide a review of their departmental budget requests. And then finally, this year's budget contains some supplemental budget requests that we'll be discussing with the City Council as well.
Andy, just as a, do you want council to wait till the very end or do you want them to ask questions as they go along? Your call.
I prefer, if you like, ask questions as we go.
That's what you would like?
If the information is going to be covered later in the presentation, then I will ask you to hold until we get to that point.
Thank you.
Just the general fund first. As you know, this is the chief operating fund of the city. This is where all the governmental type services are paid for, paid from. And this is where we budget for our general revenues to such mostly taxes and some charges for services. This coming fiscal year, based on our estimate as of today, we are projecting total general fund revenues of $17.3 million and total estimated expenditures of $17.6 million. That reflects a gap of about $300,000 for the general fund. In terms of the factors we consider when we make this general fund expenditure projections, again, as I stated at the beginning, this budget just maintains existing services, no new programs, or employees at least recommended as part of this $17.6 million budget. There will be some items that we'll be discussing as supplemental budget request. This budget avoids any use of one-time revenues or borrowing from any other funds in order to cover general fund expenditures. One key assumption we are making in projecting expenditures is that the sheriff's contract is expected to increase about 7% while their fire contract is expected to increase by 4.6%. One of the things we started several years ago is to start to pay down on our unfunded liability with respect to post-retirement healthcare costs. And this budget continues that practice. So we have provided some funding in this budget to continue to pay down that liability or set money aside to pay for that liability. One of the things that is driving our budget and that is true for all local governments in California, those who participate in the California Public Employees Retirement System, is that the pension rates have been increasing and continue to increase next fiscal year. In fact, we have an abnormally increase next fiscal year that relates to our inactive fire safety plan. This budget also includes, is based on a 3% salary adjustment. However, there is also a 2% contribution by employees into the pension retirement fund. The MOUs with respect to the two employee associations were negotiated last year and that MOU calls for a 3% salary adjustment this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. But it also calls for every employee to contribute additional 2% of their pay into the pension fund. This is the portion the city used to pay this 2%. So with this additional 2% contribution by employees, employees now will be paying, beginning fiscal year 2016-2017, their entire 8% cost for pension. There is a favorable item on the budget for the general fund. That is, we have a limited one-time item that is included in the current fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. And those are expenditures related to the auto mall sign and the Crestview remediation efforts. In terms of our general fund revenues, here are the factors that impact our projection of revenues. At this point, we anticipate a 4.7% decrease in sales tax from the current FY 2015-2016 levels. The reason for that is that this current fiscal year 2015-2016 includes a one-time item, a revenue receipt from the state. If you recall back in 2004, when the state was facing massive budget shortfall, what they did was to take away 25% of sales tax revenues from cities and backfilled that 25% with property tax. Now, 11 years later, the state has now paid off the bonds they issued, the economic recovery bonds, which were issued to cover the budget shortfall for the state. And those bonds are now paid off. And as part of that early implementation of that program, they also deducted additional amount from the city and every city in California. That amount will be reimbursed back to us this current fiscal year and that's about $389,000. So because of that, that's why it looks like our revenues are going down for fiscal year 2016-2017. In essence, our sales tax projection is actually flat if you subtract out the one-time revenues that we anticipate to receive this current fiscal year. The other major revenue category item in the general fund is our property tax. We anticipate that property tax is going to grow next year by 2.7%. That is a slight increase and that is based on assessed values. This is of course the values that are assigned to real property by the county tax assessor. And additionally, we receive a small amount of payment from the county as a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And we are anticipating a slight increase in the amount that is going to come back to the city for next fiscal year. Vehicle license fees, another big item in our revenue category for general fund. We are expecting that that revenue is going to go up by 3% for next fiscal year. And this is based on information we obtained from the state. Franchise fee, these are fees that are paid by the electric company, the gas company, the West Hall company. For next year, we expect, expecting that revenue category to go up by 7.2%. The reason for that is the phasing of the increase in refuse franchise. The rest of the franchise revenues are expected to remain flat between 2016 fiscal year to 2017 fiscal year. Finally, on the general fund revenue, we are projecting a decrease of about 17% to community development fees. This is due to lower anticipated building activities. But I can guarantee you, this is the one item that we always go wrong on. We do take a conservative approach and that is the way Steve likes to project this revenue. And that's a good thing to do because we simply cannot tell the level of building activities that is going to take place in the city. So we just take a conservative approach in projecting that revenues. And if there is a need to amend that, we'll do that at mid-year. Highlights for the water fund. The water fund is where we have a major issue right now. And we are projecting revenues of $8.3 million. That revenue is, has dropped a lot. And the primary reason for that drop is the water conservation mandates by the state. And while it is a good thing that our residents are compliant and conserving water, it is having a severely negative impact on revenues for the water fund. The bad side of that is we cannot reduce our expenditures that quickly. Most of the expenditures in the water fund are in fact fixed expenditures because of our obligations under take-or-pay contracts. So back in 2014 fiscal year, we realized $9.7 million in revenue. And this coming fiscal year 2016-2017, we are only projecting $8.3 million in revenue for the water fund. And again, that is precisely due to the impact of water conservation. Here are the factors we consider when we project general, I'm sorry, water fund revenues. We are looking at current consumption levels and we are believing that that consumption levels will hold. And if they hold, then that is going to severely impact our revenues. Existing water rate structure, and we have implemented the rates that were previously approved by City Council. In fact, the last rate increase that was implemented was two fiscal years ago, except for the pass-through cost increase that the City Council approved at the midway into this fiscal year. Again, unfortunately, that is not generating a whole lot of revenues because that is based on actual consumption. Our water fund expenditures are based on the following factors. Again, purchased water costs. They are estimated based on our obligations under the take-or-pay contract. If for some reason we are able to have the city of Corona, for example, take some of that water down the road next fiscal year, obviously that will reduce our cost. But we have no way of knowing that for fact. So we are projecting our total expenditures based on the contracts we have to purchase water. Now, the other items in the budget, the water fund budgets that are helping increase the expenditures, we have provided funding here to do a rate study. And obviously with this conservation issues and the impact on revenue, we're going to need to again study the rates and determine what adjustments are necessary to balance revenues with expenditures. We have provided for a slight increase in contractual services for well treatment. The, one of the things we do is let, take a look at how employees are assigned. As you know, Public Works Department, they have a crew of employees that perform several duties. They cover for street maintenance, they cover for sewer, they cover for water, they cover for parkway maintenance and all that, storm drain cleaning and other things. So what we do as part of the budget process is to review how those employees are assigned and make the necessary allocation to the various funds, whether it's sewer or water and or gas tax fund. This year, there is some reduction to the water fund as a result of that reallocation of expenditures. And a couple of other things here is that the water fund expenditures, we have included a set aside, additional set aside for vehicle replacement. We have fallen behind in terms of setting money aside to replace vehicles after we have exhausted their useful life. And so we are trying to do some catch-up here in order to be able to replace those vehicles when they come for replacement. The budget as currently drafted includes a $300,000 transfer to the Water Capital Fund. This is something we have done over the last three or four fiscal years. Because of the shortfall we are anticipating here, we will be discussing that a little down the road as well. The sewer fund, we have a projected total revenues of $6.4 million and total projected expenditures of $6.5 million. So there is a gap of about $100,000 in the sewer fund. Again, the factors that are driving our revenue projection here is based on the existing rates. And sewer fund expenditures also includes a reallocation of salaries and benefits from the water fund. Okay, so to the extent that we reduce some expenditures in the water fund, some of that actually goes to the sewer fund. And the sewer fund also provides for additional funding to address estimated increase in treatment plant pass-through. This is the amount that the Western Riverside Regional West Water Authority charges to the city for operating the sewer treatment plant. The budget also includes an amount for rate study as well as geographic information system upgrade. And finally, on the expenditure side, it does include a $250,000 transfer to Sewer Capital Projects Fund. And now let's go into a little bit of more information for the general fund. This is a schedule of our revenue categories in the general fund. So this provides a three column actually of numbers. The first column reflects what our amended budget is for the current fiscal year. And FY 2015-2016 year end estimate is our best estimate of where we will be at the end of this current fiscal year. And then the next column is our budget for 2016-2017. Again, the primary items here as we talked about, the property tax going up by 2.76%. The sales tax going down by 4.72%. We talked about franchise fees going up by 7.2% approximately. And charges for services. This includes not just only community development, but it also includes parks and wrecks and other use of fees that the city generates. And we are looking for that to go down overall by 7.36%. Overall, the general fund revenue, when you compare it to what we estimate to receive this fiscal year, is shows a 1.69% decrease. So we are going from estimate that shows $7.6 million to projection for next year of $17.3 million. Okay, this is just a chart again that tells, breaks down the revenues by percentages. Then to note here, as we always say, sales tax is very important to the city of Norco. $6.2 million approximate projection for next year makes up 36% of the revenues that comes into the general fund. There are some other key categories in here, the vehicle license fees, which is generating $2.3 million to the general fund revenues. The franchise fees, we've talked about a little bit and which is another key component of general fund revenues. And again, this is just a chart that breaks down the revenues by categories. Talking about property tax, again, there are several components of property tax revenues. That includes the secured and unsecured levies, the tax increment that I briefly mentioned a while ago, which is a pass-through distribution from the county. And then there are penalties also for those who do not pay their property tax on time. And when the county collects those penalties, they do send them to us based on our proportionate share of their revenue. Again, this property tax, we assume that there will be an increase of 2.7%. We've already talked about sales tax. And again, we believe our estimate for sales taxes, which is flat, is conservative, but is consistent with what our sales tax consultant are projecting. The other revenue category in the general fund, which we would group them as other taxes and that consists of public safety sales tax, there is a property transfer tax. This is a tax that is levied when a real property is sold. There is transient occupancy tax, TOT, and business license tax. This revenue category for fiscal year 2015, 2000, actually 2017, 2016-2017 is projected to be flat from FY 2016-2015-2016. So we are projecting no change in this revenue category. Franchise fees, as I mentioned a while ago, it includes franchises on cable televisions, electric, gas and refuse. The only thing that is increasing, that we are projecting an increase to is the refuse franchise. Again, another category of revenues for the general fund is what we call charges for services. And that includes planning division fees, building fees, engineering fees, parks and wrecks fees. Again, these fees are projected to decrease as a whole by 7.36% when compared to the current fiscal year. The other revenue categories, what we include here is the voluntary emergency medical services, subscription program, dog licenses, penalties, fire inspection fees and fire plan fees. And for this category of revenues, we are again projecting a decrease of 7.74% due to a one-time reimbursement of administrative costs, which is included in the fiscal year 2015-2016 year. And then there are reimbursements to the general fund to cover cost allocation. These generally would come from some of the other funds, such as water funds, sewer fund, some allocations from the CFDs. And there is no change, this one is no change from this current fiscal year. I know this is a, this is very busy, but it's just a breakdown of where the money goes from the general fund. Again, the big ticket items on here obviously is police services and fire is about $3.9 million. Police in total is about $5.4 million funded out of the general fund. The other categories in here that we have parks, building, recreation services and about $2 million. And then non-departmental, which we will talk about a little bit later on. And when each department presents their budget, they will go into a little bit more details with respect to some of this departmental budget. So, in terms of, this has become a chart that we use quite often. And this is a trend of how our revenues, general fund revenues, compares to our expenditures. And then what is happening to our reserve, which is our ready-to-fund. And this is our savings after we've paid all our expenditures every year. What is left goes into a reserve. As you can see from this chart again, during the recession years of 2007, 2008, you can see that the red line, which is our expenditures, those exceed, the expenditures exceeded revenues during those years. As a result, you can see the effect on the fund balance. Fund balance was going down as we get to a balancing period here of 2010, 2011, 2012. Since that fiscal year, revenues have been trending higher than expenditures. And as a result, our ready-to-funds have increased. Okay, so in a nutshell, talked a little bit about our ready-to-funds. This is what it This is what it looks like if we include the information based on the preliminary budget that we are presenting to you this evening. So, at the beginning of this current fiscal year, that ready-to-fund had a balance of $7.8 million. For fiscal year 2015-2016, we are estimating revenues of $17.6 million approximately and expenditures of $16.7 million. So, that ready-to-fund is projected to increase to $8.7 million by the end of this current fiscal year, July 1 of 2016. And the revenues that we are projecting for this fiscal year, $17.3 million, and then we subtract out the expenditures that we are estimating so far for this fiscal year. And if the all the expenditures and revenues come in as projected, then by the end of next fiscal year, the ready-to-fund will go up, will go down by 8.4, go down to $8.4 million. The difference, of course, is the $300,000, which is the amount that expenditures are projected to exceed revenues for next fiscal year. Okay, so, we talked about the gap we have of $340,000 in the general fund. Here is what we are proposing to, how we propose to make that up, is that when we consider all the budget adjustments that the city council has approved for fiscal year 2015-2016, and the, on the revenue side, and we compare that to our projected year-end revenues for fiscal year 2015-2016, we are looking to add additional $332,000 in revenue based on the amount that has already been approved by the city council. On the expenditure side, we are projecting that we have a savings of $137,460. So, with that, we, our proposal would be to use these savings, which have not been currently factored into fund balance, to balance fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. And after we do that, there will be still additional $130,000 that will be left in, to add to fund balance. But, we have supplemental budget request that is going to take this amount away. Again, quick recap of our water fund. In terms of where our revenue comes from, the $8 million in revenue, currently, we are looking at domestic water sales consumption is about $6.9 million, and irrigation water sales is about $700,000. And finally, there are some miscellaneous revenues also of other types of charges, of revenues that come into the water fund to make up $349,000. Here's a breakdown of water fund expenditures, salaries and benefits actually going down, partially because of some of the reallocation. Purchased water cost and utilities expected to go up by 21%. And again, part of that is that because this fiscal year, $4.9 million has already factored in the fact that we have already sold some water to the city of Corona. And therefore, our estimated expenditures for fiscal year 2015-2016 is lower than what we are projecting for fiscal year 2016-17. Again, this amount is, captures all our obligations under the purchased water contracts. And to the extent that we sell water to Corona, to some other third party, this number will go down. Debt service, that is, there is no change there. Maintenance, supply, services, and rentals, that one is going down. And part of that is, in this fiscal year 2015-2016, there was a one-time item included that is not being carried over to fiscal year 2016-2017. And overhead reimbursements to other funds, that one is not changing. And by the way, included in here is the $300,000 annual transfer to Water Capital Projects Fund, which again, because of the deficit we have, we are going to be recommending that that transfer not continue. And finally, internal service charges, I talked a bit about the fact that we are setting, we are reserving some funds in order to be able to replace vehicles when they come up for replacement. That increased a budget, we are reflecting that in here, and that's precisely the difference between a fiscal year 2016 and the fiscal year 2017. And overall, the water fund expenditures is budgeted to go up by 9.7%. Again, this is a breakdown of the expenditures in the water fund. And then, finally, on the water fund, the projected revenues, less than projected expenditures, estimated water fund shortfall at the end of this current fiscal year, we would have used all our reserves in the water fund, and that will leave us with a shortfall of $212,000, which we are going to carry into the next fiscal year. And add that to the $1.7 million, we are expecting to, the shortfall for next fiscal year 2016-2017 will be down to a negative walking capital of $1.9 million. So, in terms of how we would deal with that, on the short term, here is our proposal to deal with that situation in the short term. Currently, we would be recommending that we transfer $700,000 back from the Water Capital Fund to the Operating Fund. In essence, these are transfers that have been made from the operating side to the capital side over the years. Because of the deficit situation we are facing, we will be recommending that part of the budget for next year includes a transfer back to the Operating Fund. The second item that we are proposing in order to close the gap for the water fund is that currently, the city has stored water with Chino Basin Water Master, and that stored water has been accumulated over a number of years. What we are recommending is to sell 2,000 acre feet of that water, which will generate approximately a million dollars into the water fund. And finally, we are recommending that the annual transfer to the Water Capital Fund at least be suspended for this next coming fiscal year, and that would be our proposal to balancing the water fund budget. Again, a breakdown of sewer fund expenditures by categories. We have contractual services there for $2.8 million. We have debt service, $1.7 million, $1.8 million approximately. Contractual services is going up by 53%. As I pointed out, there are several factors that are impacting this. First of all, this number here is not being compared to last year's budget, it's being compared to the amount we anticipate spending by the end of this fiscal year. But, next year's budget does include a $500,000 increase from Western Riverside County Regional West Water Authority, which is being passed through to the city of Norco. And salaries and benefits is going up, and again, part of that is because of the reallocation of costs from the water fund to the sewer fund. This next item, there is no change, and currently does include $250,000 transfer from sewer Operating Fund to Sewer Capital Fund. Internal Service Fund, similar to what we saw in water, is we are reserving additional money in order to replace vehicles when they come due. And finally, maintenance, supplies, and services, there was a one-time item, again, this fiscal year 2015-2016, that is no longer being carried over to fiscal year 2016-2017. Again, a graphical representation of the $6.5 million in expenditures. Again, the bulk of that is for contractual services. The second highest item in there is for debt service payments. The additional information on this chart, on this chart here, on this slide here, is that, again, part of the sewer fund budget includes a set aside for rate study as well as the geographic information system upgrade. In terms of how we plan to eliminate that shortfall, it would be staff's recommendation to make, to not make the $250,000 transfer to the Water Capital Project Fund for fiscal Gas Tax Fund is another fund that we do put an operating budget together. This fund is used to account for the city's share of state allocation of gas tax revenues. The revenues are allocated based on several factors. The primary one is population. And there are some restrictions as to how this revenue can be used, and they are restricted to streets, roadwalk, signal maintenance, porthole repairs, traffic lights, traffic light utilities, as well as street trimming. For the next fiscal year 2016-17, we have been told, based on information from the League of California Cities, that our allocation is $562,000. Our expenditures, though, on the other hand, we are projecting a $737,000. Part of that increase is we are recommending increase in tree treatment services, as well as some budget to remove some trees that potentially create unsafe conditions. The way we are going to make up the difference between the expenditures of $737,000 versus revenues of $562,000 is we are going to draw from existing fund balance of the Gas Tax Fund. That's perfectly okay to do that. In fact, the reason those, the results accumulated over time is that we spent less than what was allocated to us. Ultimately, those fund balances are dedicated to doing, paying for expenditures that are With that, let's stop here and then answer some questions if you have them.
Somebody have questions? Ted? Can you use your microphone, Ted, please?
Andy, on the water fund, short-term budget balancing, you list for fiscal year 2016-17, the additional sale of water, is that a one-time?
Yeah, that would be certainly a one-time revenue.
So, for further, that's just all it is, it's not anything we continue on or anything?
No.
It's just a one-time to catch the balance of it?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Robin?
On the other taxes?
Yes.
Where it has the TOT tax, you guys don't foresee that going up at all since the park's going to be in, open for a whole calendar year?
Well, you know, the hotels, they are currently doing very well, and there is, and there is, we don't believe that there is going to be another hotel here in that short period of time. They could, that amount could go up slightly, but again, when we are projecting these revenues, we tend to take a conservative approach based on the fact that these hotels are doing well currently. We don't want to stretch it, but we take a look at it again at mid-year, and if we have information to revise those projections, we'll do that at mid-year.
Okay, my other question is, how many properties in Norco still have irrigation meters?
I have no sense.
There are very many or no?
I would imagine there's a lot.
Really?
Yes. These are for landscape meters is what is, commercial properties.
Every commercial property should have a potable meter and then a irrigation meter.
What about residential?
Residential, I don't believe have irrigation unless they have a certain...
It's an extremely small percentage.
I was going to say there's some, I know, but...
Those numbers are from the old farming days.
Okay.
Most of them are access.
Okay. All right, I think that's it.
Erwin? Greg?
Thanks. Just a little bit, I kind of feel that there's light at the end of the tunnel with the water fund and the sewer fund in regard to the water when we hopefully move forward with the change of use and we're able to use recycled water and also sell that. That will benefit the water fund, will it not? Down the road?
Down the road, yes. Recycled water, maybe I'll let you speak to that.
Internal use for the, within the city, it's going to be very nominal as far as the amount of water that we use individually, as far as the LMDs, obviously, which pay for water, our city facilities. You're going to have the lake at the Norconian, we're going to try to bring water over to the Crestlon Cemetery, and so, but overall, that's not a large user block. Most of the water we have left over from our recycled water is, our hope is, we will sell that to the city of Corona, and that could help you supplement some of the water funds that we would need to augment this, but it's not projected to be a significant amount of money every year. It just depends how much water we have available from RICRA. And right now, it's very limited, it's right now it's zero, and we're hoping to get a little bit each of the next three years. So, it'll hopefully ramp up as long as we have a customer, which is not going with Corona, who wants that water.
But, we're putting ourselves in a better position every year with this.
Correct.
If this all comes forward. Then, and then the other part is, just to let everyone know, I shared with Andy and Chad what some different cities are charging as far as like surcharges for conservation and, and basically, it was like Fontana Water Company that, but the opinion I'm getting is some of that is illegal to do even though they're doing it. Is that still your position? I mean, compared to what we charge?
Every agency has their own methodology, they want to try to recoup funds, and that's something this city may have to consider as far as any type of rate structures that we may look at. But, you know, obviously, legal needs to look at those options, determine what those different mechanisms are, whether or not they're legal with under the state rules. And again, every agency does differently, I certainly have my own professional and personal... I certainly have my own professional and personal opinions about what some agencies do, whether it's legal or not. But what we do here, we're going to make sure that obviously is, was in line with the state allows.
Yeah, spinning at the positive way, that a city and a water company is not allowed to charge anything other than the actual cost of providing the service. You're aware, obviously, of the San Juan Capistrano case where the court held that tiered, at least San Juan Capistrano's tiered system was unconstitutional. You can't simply say, and I don't know what Fontana's doing, so I won't say whether it's good, bad, or different.
It's not tiered, I'll tell you that.
And you can't simply say, we're going to charge more to make you conserve.
The other thing to keep in mind...
I can show you that in black and white, though.
To Fontana Water Company.
I didn't say they weren't doing it.
Right.
Fontana Water Company is actually not a municipal water company.
It's San Gabriel Water.
Yeah, it's a publicly, a public company. And I believe their rate goes through a PUC process. So through that process, I would imagine anything that was, is approved would be considered legal.
Okay. I guess what I was hoping for, at the end of the day, that we've had discussions on, we'd like to spend a million dollars a year in water capital improvements. That's not going to happen in this next fiscal year?
Right now, we have funds available to do water improvements. But, and we'll bring this back to you at the next budget cycle, maybe we talk about capital projects. That money is projected to be gone after this next year.
And obviously, charging for services we're providing, which is capital improvements, is permissible to charge as part of the water rate. I mean, there's no dispute about that.
Okay. And then just briefly on the sewer part, and you may not like how I say this, but is, what is the poss, after the plant expansion, what is the possibility of that JPA moving away from Western Municipal?
It's my understanding that that discussion is taking place right now.
Okay. Is that a confidential discussion or?
I'd say it's very informal between member agencies.
Okay. So I don't need to comment further? Is that kind of the look you're giving me? All right, thanks.
So I'm just a little bit confused about the, my understanding is, as soon as we're able to get our water freed up with the lawsuit and able to put the water underneath the bridge, the two items, my understanding was, when our parks and everything come up and they're running, we will save a significant amount of money on recycled water. Is that not true?
Well, you're offsetting one use for another, and there's still a cost to providing that. I mean, we've built infrastructure, we have to manage the infrastructure. The folks that currently manage the various water sewer systems still have to manage that system. We're not getting revenue from our public facilities for the water we provide to them. So that's not going to change anything. But the cost of having the potable system there is now, is still there, but now is not being offset. So we will, our goal is really to get some revenue from Corona through our existing agreements when we can sell them water, which will help augment our various funds. Whether it goes into the recycle water fund to augment that further, to help pay for those services that we're providing, or the water fund. It, those are discussions we'd have once we actually are providing that service to Corona. We have a defined revenue source. It's something we need to sit down and say, where does this revenue fund, should it go? And where is it best suited?
What does Hidden Valley use?
Excuse me?
Hidden Valley Golf Course.
They, we have, they have a potable water service for their office, the club. But they use their own private well water that they take over the hill from Riverside over into their area.
So in a way, by using recycled water, we might even use less of the water that we're purchasing?
In a matter of fact, yes, but it doesn't reduce our obligations as far as...
How much of that water do we use that we purchase? What percentage do we know?
Very small. I mean, our total water demand is only 500 gallons per minute at max capacity in our current design for the reclaim system. So it's going to be very, you're talking maybe 400 acre feet a year of a 62 to 6500 acre feet demand.
That's what we use.
Right now, under the conservation, it's definitely gone down right now. We're about 6200 acre feet projecting by the end of this fiscal year.
So what we purchase, what do we leave on the table that we don't use? How much?
We're about even right now. I mean, we're obligated at a minimum to purchase 6,000 acre feet of water. But thankfully, Corona has purchased a thousand, well, predicted to purchase 1,000 acre feet of water, which is a taken demand from us. We've already pumped groundwater about 1,000 acre feet, which is obviously cheaper for us. So that helps us in overall costs. So our projection is, again, we're going to end up even as far as our obligations. And that's thankfully because of the relationship with Corona. If they weren't there, we probably wouldn't meet our obligations just from the take or pays, and we'd be paying for water we never even took.
Okay. Any other questions?
Same line then. If we're on our take and pay and we're selling this to Corona, can we also, I guess, explain how we can turn off our own wells and just use Arlington water?
That's actually what we're...
Bill was kind of giving me this discussion last week.
I mean, we're not obligated to use our wells. And we can, because Arlington can provide up to 7,000 acre feet a year, which would meet our demand if we needed it. And the cost, as much, the more that we produce at Arlington, our costs go down marginally. So instead of maybe paying $900 per acre foot from Arlington, if we only pump 5,000 acre feet, it may go down to 850 if we go to 6,000.
I was under the impression we were shutting our wells off.
Yeah, all our wells are off right now, mainly because we realized in doing the accounting that we just were not taking enough water from Arlington. And so now we are on a flurry to make sure that, thankfully, I'd say, the hot weather is helping us in that there's a larger water demand. So we are pushing to try to get, basically, we need to get about 1,400 acre feet between now and June to get our target number. And that's with Corona taking 1,000 acre feet. If they hadn't taken that, we would not meet our target. So we're going to manage a little bit differently going into this next year, where we're going to mainly take Arlington water from the very beginning and not focus really at all on our wells until we've met our, most of our obligations, gotten closer to what we need to do, then we'll bring our wells back online as needed. But the reality is, we have these take or pays and we're obligated to them. And the last thing I want to do is to say, I have to pay a million dollars and I didn't get anything in return. So we're going to try to meet our goals and then back off on those and use our wells where we can. The wells have their own issues as far as the quality of the water, the treatments, the temperature, you know, those are things we've talked about, counsel about, building infrastructure to help reduce those impacts. But there's, right now, we're kind of shifting away from that only because if we're not going to use our wells in a more frequent manner, it doesn't make sense to spend $3 million on infrastructure improvements when we're really going to be taking purchased water. So we're going to try to work, you know, with getting additional partners that might be able to take some of these take or pays, so that we can say, okay, we've got other partners that won't take some of this water off of our hands. We can then bring our wells back up to better, fuller capacity, which is our cheaper water. And that's our goal. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll go into the various departments' budget discussion. And we're going to start with police. Now I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Braddock.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. Going over our expenditure for, the planned expenditure for 1617, our year-end, we are anticipating to be under or near the amended budget. Our 1617 budget and expenditures are roughly $366,000 or 7.11% higher than FY1516. And that is due to the anticipated 7% increase in the sheriff's contract services and the additional appropriation of using the $100,000, again, for our traffic enforcement. And then finally, we do have the crossing guard program that we have within our budget, and that includes the extra position at Norco Elementary.
Do you want to ask questions or just...
Again, there are no changes to this budget other than the change in the contract rate. In terms of staffing, it's a status quo budget, and we're continuing what we're doing today.
You have a question, Erwin?
Yes, Eric, on the crossing guard, do we pay the 100% of that or does the school district help pay part of that?
It is split with the school district. I don't have the exact numbers or how the split works.
It's 50/50.
50/50.
Okay, so we're not paying 100% of the crossing guards outfit, all right? And the $100,000 for traffic enforcement, that's what we implemented about three years ago, when, or two years ago, when we started getting the extra officers in here on overtime?
Yeah, this would be for the third fiscal. The first fiscal, we did 75,000. The second was 100,000. And then we're looking at revisiting that same amount for this next fiscal.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Ted?
Eric, on that 100,000, are we pretty much tapped that out till June?
We will come in at or just under the total amount.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you. Just in how many hours is that really, roughly, if you know?
Offhand, I don't know. I'd have to research that. And what we do is, the way we budget the hours or the amount of money is, we put a cap on each month so we can equally distribute it through the 12 months of the fiscal year. And what happens is, there are points where we do programs that might exceed the expenditure for that month, so the following month, we'll have to come in under. But we try and disperse it as equally as we can amongst the 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on.
Honorable mayor, council members, the 2015, 2016 estimated expenditures are estimated to be below what was adjusted in January with the amended budget. For 2016, 2017, budget expenditures are increasing by $170,875 due to an estimated 4.6% increase in the CAL FIRE contract. Additional funding of $50,000 for fire injury replacement is provided through the equipment replacement fund. With that, I'll take any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Chief, when, you had mentioned this a few meetings ago, that with Canyon Lake no longer wanting fire service or CAL FIRE or whatever, that, that would affect all of our rates?
Correct.
Is, in, with that, how much is that attributed to the percentage change? Would you know that?
I don't know that. I can ask the question, but there's discussion that Canyon Lake is now returning and San Jacinto has put on the ballot a tax measure in July to bring back their fire station. They closed. So if they both come back, then the contract price reduces yet again. It's just, it fluctuates based on how many, how many partners are in the contract.
Okay.
And that's why they're estimates. The actuals come in after fiscal year, and I just want to note that we've always been under budget. We've never billed at the contracted, what is the estimated contract. So that should come through in about September is when the actual finals come in and we have all the true numbers. We're trued up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Newton, if I could make some clarification with respect to the fire budget and the impact that may come as a result of some cities or a city leaving. Currently, the way, the way the rate structure is, is that we only get billed for those personnel that are assigned to the city of Norco. There is a small portion of the rate or the cost that is associated to items such as dispatching. Okay? So if a city leaves, that, the cost of dispatching would go up, for example, on a proactive basis, to the remaining cities. But again, the bulk of the cost for us is based on only those staff that is assigned to the city of Norco.
Like when we had that fire up above Engels Park and that, the air resources, okay? We're not charged anything additional for those resources. But would that not be in that equation if those, the group of cities help offset not only dispatch, but let's say, air resources also?
Yeah, the things that are, they're considering a cost pool.
Right. So there's all other functions there?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Chief, you said that San Jacinto was going to bring back their fire station. Aren't they CAL FIRE now?
They closed, they had two fire stations. They closed one, I believe it was about a year ago.
Okay.
And they have, they're putting a proposal together for July to have a tax to bring the other one back. Whether that's successful or not, who knows?
Because I thought I read this morning where the CAL FIRE guys is one that got pelted by the bricks yesterday on that medical call.
We still operate the fire station in downtown San Jacinto. You're correct. Those were our folks that were hit with bricks.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just for the record, the service that we get for the amount of money we pay, given where we came from, is extraordinary. I mean, backfilling stations and airplanes and just the resources, absolutely incredible. And I'm real pleased with the service, just for the record. Absolute super service, yep. Well, I wouldn't go that far.
All right. Was it at your house last year?
That's right.
Okay. Honorable mayors and mayor and members of the city council, in regards to the fiscal support services budget, comparing the current year 1516 estimated to the amended is coming a little bit low because of salary and benefit savings. And the main difference in the next fiscal year budget to the current fiscal year 1516 budget, there's a decrease mainly because of the human resources department being moved to its own department. And because we're very frugal and we save a lot of money. But anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, please, Erwin.
Yeah, she probably won't ask. How many employees do we have currently in the city of Norco?
54 or something like that, I'm not sure. Is it 50 some, 54? Like 50 something?
I'll never find it in that book. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Moving on to the city clerk.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, for the city clerk's budget, the 2015, 2016 estimated expenditures are just below the budgeted amounts due to savings in salary and benefits. And for the 2016, 2017 budgeted expenditures, there is a decrease of approximately 29,000 or 9.38% due to it being an off-cycle election year. And so we don't have the costs associated with an election.
Any questions? Yeah, Ted?
I hate to put you on the spot, Cheryl, compare this to a non-election year, the fiscal year 1415. Are we about the same then? I'm just trying to get it.
For the previous election?
Well, when there was a non-election year. You're dropping down, so we're going back to a non-election year on 1617 for your projection. So would this, are we back to a, say, for example, the 1415 year?
I don't have the numbers for that, but I would imagine it's pretty close.
Okay, I just wonder how much the election...
It's been consistently about the same costs.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Economic development? Roger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our current fiscal year expenditures are well below the amended budgeted amounts primarily because of a rather conservative management... well below the amended budgeted amounts primarily because of a rather conservative management of our anticipated marketing fees. Our goals haven't changed, but we've been able to do a lot of our work in-house rather than using contracted services. Our budgeted expenditures for the new fiscal year are thirty-seven percent lower than the current fiscal year, largely because we had one, a single one-time expenditure this year related to the autumn off sun. And our budgeted amount includes funding for continued attendance at the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference, one per year. It's proven to be a very effective means of connecting with businesses that can benefit the local economy.
Any questions? The deferred historic preservation consulting fee, that's because Bill Wolkman is essentially not charging us.
He's been doing a lot of work for a small amount of money, yes.
Yeah.
Just for clarification purposes, he is charging us.
Oh, he is charging us.
What has happened is that he hasn't finished the contract, so some of that cost is being carried forward to next fiscal year.
He's been, yes, that is correct.
He's also doing, for every one hour he works, he's not charging us for like five. It's extraordinary, so. Any other questions? Moving on to Human Resources. Ah, got it, got it, got it. Andy, they can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have my, what I said was that there is no budget for fiscal year fifteen sixteen for Human Resources Division. The reason for that is that in those fiscal years, the budget was included under Fiscal and Support Services. Beginning with fiscal year sixteen seventeen, the Human Resources budget is being aligned with the organizational reporting structure, and therefore that budget is being included in the Administration Department. That's why you don't have any comparison for those previous fiscal years.
Moving on to Planning, Building and Safety Code Enforcement.
The, all three divisions are, have increases due to higher pension costs and salary adjustments. There are two increases, and one of them in Code Enforcement, that's due to higher anticipated contractual services as we kick the vehicle abatement program into higher gear. And then in the Building and Safety Division, a part-time position was increased or was upgraded to a full-time position.
Any questions? Yeah, Ted.
Steve, on the vehicle program through Code Enforcement, do we get any funds back from the VICRs then?
We do. What happens is we have to spend the money upfront and then get reimbursed.
Okay, so this doesn't show any of that income coming back?
Doesn't show the reimbursement.
Okay.
So what we anticipate happening is there'll be increased costs this year and probably the reimbursement will be reflected in the following year.
Okay, so, just as long as we're getting some of the VICR fees back. Okay, thank you.
Recreation Services, Michelle.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. I'll first start with Recreation Services. And the fiscal year fifteen sixteen estimated expenditures are below amended budget amounts primarily due to the decrease of actual full-time salaries expended and a vacancy in the part-time volunteer coordinator position during the year, along with some estimated lower utility expenses. For fiscal year sixteen seventeen, the budget expenditures are slightly higher due to pension costs and salary adjustments. However, the good thing is we have some offsetting revenue due to increased participation in leisure service, leisure classes and rentals at the community center. For Youth and Teen Services, the fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen estimated expenditures and revenues are in line with the amended budget. For fiscal year sixteen seventeen, budget expenditures are twelve percent higher due to a full year of minimum wage increases along with merit increases for part-time personnel costs, along with some internal service charge, internal service fund charges, which relates to computing and communications operations charges. Also with fifteen sixteen, budget revenues are eleven percent higher due to increase in program fees as well as revenues for adult sports. For park maintenance, the fifteen sixteen fiscal year year-end estimated expenditures are in line with the amended budget. Fiscal year sixteen seventeen budgeted expenditures are five-point-two-three percent higher than fiscal year fifteen sixteen due to pension rate increases, increase in estimated contractual services, along with some internal service fund charges. For Senior Services, fiscal year fifteen sixteen year-end budget expenditure increase is due to the party partners' expenses and facility improvements, which were offset by donations from the church and from Horse Week, which were not included in the mid-year budget adjustments. For fiscal year sixteen seventeen, estimated expenditures and revenues are in line with the amended budget. However, this includes the elimination of the party partners' program for fifteen sixteen until funding becomes available. Fiscal year sixteen seventeen revenues are fourteen percent less than fifteen sixteen due to the lower participation minimally for the seniors on their excursions and primarily due to the elimination of the party partners' program donation account, which is the revenue with the offsetting expenditures. For Building Maintenance, fifteen sixteen fiscal year estimated year-end expenditures are higher due to unforeseen contractual expenditures for building maintenance. Fiscal year sixteen seventeen budgeted expenditures are less than one percent higher due to reclassification of a full-time personnel. And fiscal year sixteen seventeen revenues are twenty-three percent lower, the estimated for the elimination of the library lease and in decrease install rentals from cancellations of two shows, the Arabian Show and the Mustang Makeover. And in Animal Control, the fiscal year fifteen sixteen estimated year-end expenditures are slightly higher than amended budget due to increase in contractual services. In fifteen sixteen, revenues increased mainly due to increased revenue collected through dog licensing and citations. There is no change in the fiscal year sixteen seventeen budget as a result of a reduction of special departmental contractual services and buildings and grounds, which is going to absorb the increases from the pension rates and annual overtime. For fiscal year sixteen seventeen, revenues have decreased by slightly less than thirteen and a half percent mainly due to unknown state reimbursement for fines issued. This amount, though, traditionally adjusts and increases at mid-year because right now we don't know what that number is and we'll find out before mid-year and make that adjustment. Any questions?
Questions? Ted?
Michelle, I don't want, I know this is, throw you in the hot seat when Brian's not here. The maintenance program, you, I see there's a maintenance program in the building maintenance and at the George Ingalls Equestrian Center. What does that include? Because as far as maintenance goes, do we have contractual maintenance up there on the facilities? Or do we have, because if there is, I don't see any, and I'm not being facetious, I just don't see it. Is this, are guys doing the maintenance or is this contractual? On here, she's talking about maintenance on the expenditures up at.
On for, for park maintenance?
Yeah, you got building maintenance, GIEs, that.
I'm on the wrong page, sorry.
Seven thirty-seven.
Um, I'm. That would be primarily for the air conditionings. That is in Building Maintenance Division, not just, that division does not just cover George Ingalls. That covers all citywide buildings.
Okay, so there is, we don't have a specific.
I don't have a breakdown specifically for George Ingalls, no. It's built into the Division seven thirty-seven budget.
All right, all right, thank you.
Else? I have a couple of questions. The library, so, is officially moving or what's happening with that in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen? Do we know?
Yeah, well, the library, if you recall, they did notify us that they will be relocating the library from their current location to a location, a location near the post office. I have reached out to them initially about two months ago, three months ago when I spoke to them. They told me the relocation will be late spring, which is where we are today. I did call them last week, the librarian, to confirm if that date is still good. Unfortunately, I have not got a call back. So, but again, we are working on the assumption that beginning next fiscal year, the library will not be at their current location and therefore they will not be making lease payments.
Okay. And then, just as a point of reference, I got a statistic today that twenty-eight percent in two thousand twenty of our city will be seniors.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm concerned about the party partners. Is there any chance that Renee's gonna?
We'll be talking about that after the departments go through their budget.
Okay.
Those supplemental requests.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Then, moving on to Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council. For the Engineering Department, the fiscal year fifteen sixteen expenditures are expected to be below the existing budget as mainly due to partial, part-time positions interned, not basically either being partially filled for the year or not being built at all. So we achieved those savings. For two thousand sixteen seventeen, we are projecting a lower budget than fifteen sixteen. It's mainly due to elimination of some staffing costs, but also related to the remediation of Crestview since that was a one-time thing at this point. For Public Works Inspection, we're expecting to be on par with what we were expecting to spend for the budget, and we're going to continue that trend. Don't expect any real increase on those services. For Parkway Maintenance, the expenditures are on par with what we projected and we budgeted. We do, we have made some internal changes within the budget, so we reduce some costs so we can increase our ability to hire some CRC crews to do more maintenance on the trails. But in all, it made a very marginal change in the overall budget, so it made real impact on those changes. Street Maintenance, we were well under our estimated budget mainly because we did not implement the street striping contract, which is actually going to fore-council sometime before the end of this fiscal year. But none of those expenditures really occurred. We had some reduction in contractual paving that we didn't anticipate, we anticipated a hundred thousand, we haven't done that much. And then we had some salary savings that was involved. But overall, our next budget is still projecting to be lower than last year's budget, mainly due to some salary allocations that we did in, on how some of our public work staffing was allocated. So I've kind of done some readjustments to that allocation, which benefited some savings for that fund. And, but we did, even with that, we are increasing or recommending increase to the tree trimming services for this, at least this next fiscal year. We have a number of trees that are, basically should be removed now because they're dangerous, but they're obviously very expensive. Even this increase won't scratch the surface, but it's, we want to get started, plus we want to do more tree trimming that we've been doing on, within the city. So we're trying to do more, but, and we'll discuss it later on as far as just overall desires for the city and where we want to go in actual agenda item for Council tonight. For Sewer Operations, again, I want to emphasize both water and sewer. We always budget for our extreme costs, so we always budget for the max on our operations, especially with our contractual services, whether they're treatment or take-or-pays. So when we reflect that we actually have a lower amount of expenditure, that's a good thing. We're not looking to spend those dollars if we don't have to. So for Sewer, we were, are projected to be under the, only four-point-nine million versus the five-point-eight that we had budgeted. But with that said, we do expect our budget to go up this next fiscal year. But again, that's a budgetary number because we do know that RICRA's costs are going up not only this current fiscal year, which we'll have to bring back to Council, but for next fiscal year. So that, but again, it's a projection number. It doesn't mean that our costs end up being that, matching that amount. We will, I did allocate for Sewer, in our allocation for staffing, it was pretty heavy in water in my review, and I really balanced it out amongst all our staff for Public Works at the maintenance yard to what they serve, and really made a more balance between water and sewer, and then also allocated them into the other services for streets or trails. So it's more balanced between the two funds. A majority of those, those costs go between those. So there is an increase in salaries related to the sewer fund that they are absorbing. And then one of the other things we are implementing both for water and sewer is we're going to be implementing our, beginning of our GIS program with the city, and most importantly, our Work Order Asset Management software system, which we badly need for all departments. So there's significant funding that we're adding from water, funding from water and sewer to get that up and running over this next fiscal year. I can't emphasize enough, the Work Order System will save us tremendous amount of time in getting the information out to the departments that need the assistance, especially from Public Works. It'll help us track where we are in all those endeavors. We'll be able to give customers back an information via email that we finished a job. Certainly with the asset management part is we'll be able to tell you really what it's cost us every day to do what we do. So that'll be a huge ability to really refine tune what we're spending, where, and all the job tasks that we do, we can actually categorically define them in many different ways. So that's an important task that we've, are going to try to take on and hopefully will successfully have implemented by the end of the next fiscal year. For Water Operations, again, we budget nine-point-nine based off of our, mainly our take-or-pay requirements and contractual obligations. We're estimating eight-point-six, which is, which is a good thing as far as not spending as much. Our budget is, again, for this next year, going to be actually slightly less. It's mainly a shift because of the salaries we moved over. That has the biggest impact. Plus, it reduced our electrical costs. If we're not going to be using our wells as much, we're not going to have as much electrical costs for our, so those costs are down. So that's why we're seeing our expenditures projected to be below the last year's budget. And then finally, on Stormdrain Operations, it's a fairly flat, it's limited in its funding. Mainly all our funding comes from flood control, which is a hundred percent grant. So we certainly have a lot of projects we're going to bring forward and present to you during the CIP discussions, and that will be reflected. But almost, or all those costs are covered by flood control. This is just mainly paying for staffing and other engineering-related work. With that, I have to answer a question.
Have any questions? Ted?
Chad, on contractual, earlier this year, we did the increase for the fire hydrants. We did the adjusted. Are we, is that a part of your operating budget for this year? Is a continuation of that then?
They will finish within this fiscal year. We are having allocation for more valve turning, but it's actually for our system valves now. Because once we've finished our hydrants and our isolation valves, we can skip a year, and then after that year, we will start a rotation of all the hydrants. So we do it every year. We only do a piece of them. We don't want to do a hundred thousand every year.
No, no, but we're, it's a continual contractual, so we keep them up and running so we don't have the desire.
That's the desire. So, but this next year will be for the system valves, going through all those and make sure they function and work and exercise. And then we'll be caught up in our entire system as far as appurtenances, and then it will just be a regular maintenance schedule from then on.
Okay, so we're going to continue, all right, thank you. That's what I want here, maintenance schedule, thank you. And then finally, the Stormdrain operation, and I know the county does most of that, and I know a big chunk of your budget last year was the Crestview situation that came out of your funding because we anticipated heavy rains. And if this is in the CIP budget, we can wait until next time. So are we figuring on that storm drain again? Are we hoping Riverside County Flood Control takes that project over, finally?
That's what we are pushing for. We're constantly in contact with flood control as far as what they're working with Crestlon on their discussions on purchasing the property. They're about ninety percent done with the design for that area up at Crestlon, but it's still ongoing. But we've been assured they are, we do have the right two people together that are going to discuss negotiation for purchasing the property. So we just continually keep up and then find out what's the progress. Because at some point, we'd like to bring them back here to discuss their overall plan presented and show a kind of a timeline when this might occur.
My thought process here is I don't want to cut you short or your budget short if they don't, if these two bodies don't get together and we have to. and we have to go and allocate additional funds for you to remediate or fix, do a temporary measure again. That's my thought.
What we've done is we're purchasing the K rails and leaving in place the ones that are on the east side up along the hill. We've removed, I believe, all the K rails on Crestview at this point.
On the west side.
On the west side. And we think the K rails on the east side have really done a very good job in mitigating the problem. And at this point, we move forward. We're not anticipating bringing those other K rails back for the next rainy season. We're going to see how they work by themselves.
All right.
We purchased them. They're ours and we're prepared to deal with it as issues arise.
Just want to make sure you got enough in your budget. We don't cut you short. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chad, on the street maintenance. So, why have we reduced contractual pavement patching or repair?
We haven't reduced it. We just didn't utilize it because we didn't get our paving contractor in until, I think it was February when I brought that item to you.
Okay.
We just started them really this last past this year and we just haven't had a need to do. We've got them doing some large blocks. We're just not going to get the $100,000 in before the end of the year, probably. It'll be close, but not the whole amount.
But we're still moving forward with that.
Absolutely. And that's part of the next budget, too. So, we haven't reduced anything. It's still at, right now, a block line item at $100,000.
All right.
Plan to do patchwork around the city.
And then, whether this is in, when we do the CIP or not, and I'm not singling out any other division employees, but one of my concerns is with our public works employees that we lose a lot of them to other cities. And how can we get their pay grades up where we're competitive to other cities and we're not, you know, comparing them to a lower scale of, you know, a street sweeper in Yucipa or something? How do we move forward with our budget on that?
You get to chat about that when you get to that point.
Or would it be when we do our contracts?
Yes. Yeah. It's me confer.
All right.
Moving on to non-departmental.
Okay. Non-departmental budget. This is where we budget expenditures that are not directly associated with a specific operating department. The expenditures that we budget in this non-departmental include unemployment claims, citywide dues and memberships, hiring costs, retiree medical insurance on a pay-as-you-go basis, as well as the unfunded accrued liability for the old fire pension system. In addition, we also include insurance premiums, claim settlements and professional services that are not, that benefits the city as a whole. And finally, in this budget, it includes transfer of some amount to the MPDS fund for storm drain maintenance. For FY 2016, 2017, the budget increase is largely due to the unfunded accrued liability with the old closed, or actually is inactive, fire safety pension. Last year, that budget was about $50,000. And this year, that budget is about $297,000. I have discussed the actuary study with CAWPOS. The reasons why the previous year budgets have been low is that when the, when the CAWPOS system went into a pooling of plants, where they combined plants of similar benefits and of similar size into one pool, the city's fire department at that time, we had a surplus side fund coming in. And those side funds, surplus side fund, have been used up. And beginning fiscal year 2016, 2017, the cost is full cost. Now, let me remind you, there might be a question as to, we no longer have our own fire department. Why are we paying this cost? This is to pay for benefits that they accrued or that they have earned prior to them being contracted out to CAW Fire. So, this will be an ongoing expense for the city until such a time, obviously, that the last employee retires and the last benefit is paid. The other good news here is, as you, this one is actually not a good news. The pay-go retiree healthcare costs and general liability costs are projected to increase. The reason for the pay-go retiree healthcare cost rising is that we have added additional three employees this next fiscal year to their retiree role. However, this increases are partially offset by eliminating the one-time transfer to information technology fund. So, in previous years, we have transferred $75,000, actually, $100,000 to the IT fund in order to make sure we have enough fund in that, in that fund to replace equipment. We feel at this time that we have accumulated a reasonable amount of money to ensure that we will be able to replace equipment. This will be information technology related as well as telephone equipment. That is that for the non-departmental. And I'll take any questions if you have any. Okay. So, all of those have been done, I believe. So, what we have now is supplemental budget request. Okay. So, where is this thing going? That's crazy. All right. So, the budget that we have so far discussed did not include the following items. These are items that we are submitting as a supplemental budget request. So, the first item pertains to Division 737. This is the building maintenance. The proposal here is to convert a part-time maintenance worker position to a full-time maintenance worker position. The reason we are doing that is obviously to meet the demand for services at the George Ingalls Equestrian Center and, you know, as well as to meet customer service demands. That with two facilities is becoming harder and harder to meet up with the maintenance requirements for those facilities. And the problem we have with respect to employing part-time positions is that these positions are not staying long. And therefore, the maintenance work that needs to be done is not getting done. We believe if we convert this part-time position to a full-time position, it will provide, it will be more efficient and effective in the management of the work release program. This, and therefore, we'll be able to accomplish more at this George Ingalls Equestrian Center. The net cost for doing this budget adjustment is $39,833 and that will be coming out of the general fund.
Yep.
Andy, thank you. I've been a long time since. Does this, how many hours a week would this person get?
36 hours.
36 hours. So, it'll be similar to what... And then, are we still going to retain a part-time position up there? I see Hank, yes, nodding.
Yeah, we have some part-timers.
So, we'll have the two full-timers and a part-timer up there. Excellent. Thank you.
This is already in the budget?
It's not in the budget that is, that we've discussed. But with your approval, when we bring back the final budget, this item will be included.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys, too, because this has been a problem for about three years. The guys need extra help up there to get everything done. And I appreciate you working hard to make it happen because I know how hard Patty works to keep the events booked up there and everything rolling and Hank and Keith and those guys running circles around themselves, plus the volunteers to make sure that everything gets done. So, I appreciate this. Thank you.
The next item, this pertains to Recreation and Community Services Department Division. And this request will convert a part-time administrative clerk to a full-time administrative clerk. Again, the funding source for this will be general fund, the net cost of $35,000. The idea behind this, again, is to continue to operate a reliable volunteer program. And this, this change would make sure that that happens. Again, similar to what we had with the part-time maintenance worker position is that it's becoming harder and harder for us to be effective using part-time positions. And we believe the addition of this position will add some effectiveness to the department. This position will help with software conversion as well as support the operations of the department's programs and services. Again, the net cost of this is about $35,000.
Questions?
Is this going to help our city clerk, this position?
No. There is another item that is coming up. This department works in the Parks and Recs Division.
Recreation. Okay.
If the city clerk asks for help, we would help her.
But that is...
No, I apologize. I apologize. I missed the recreation because I know what kind of fun you guys have.
If I could, just for a minute. As somebody that's been in the volunteer program for many, many years, the turnover does impact the ability of folks that are bringing in volunteers to be effective and communicate out to our volunteers. So, thank you. As a volunteer, that's, you know, getting, you guys require more paperwork now to volunteer than you used to, too. So, all of those things add up. And so, I appreciate that this is in the budget. So, thank you.
Just a little statistic, if I may. We've had probably seven part-time employees managing that program in three years. So, the turnover and the loss of workforce is huge in that time.
Okay. Building maintenance. This is an item where we are requesting to replace two air-conditioning units at City Hall. These units are over 32 years old. And in order to be energy efficient, we propose to replace two units during the upcoming fiscal year. What we have been doing currently is to Band-Aid the problems we have, we've been having with respect to this, the functionalities of this, of this air-conditioning unit. So, this funding source for this would be a capital facility improvement fund. This will not come out of the general fund. Many years ago, back in the Hall Clerk days, we started putting, putting away $50,000 every year and we did that for three years into this capital facility improvement fund. And currently, we have accumulated approximately $168,000. That was three years of worth of contribution plus interest earnings over that period of time. So, we are recommending that the city council, with your approval, will be adding this into the CIP budget. And the funding source will be this capital or will be adding it, yeah, will be adding it in Fund 152.
And the issue is, is they're so old that hamsters run them and they're all retiring, ergo, the pension fund is going up to cover their costs. That's wrong. Moving on.
Okay. Moving on. Next one. The party partners. Obviously, this is something we think benefits our seniors. And as we are going through the budget review process internally, this is one of the items we consider to eliminate. But after much discussions, we are recommending that the city council authorize staff to add this, add back this program to the budget. This will be funded from the general fund and the net, net cost of this program, including cost for supplies as well as the part-time personnel that runs the program, will be $20,401. Of course, there is always a possibility that someone can step up and make donation that is similar to what we got last year in that way.
Has anybody called Renee in her church? Just to...
Actually, we had some initial discussions with her and her, her initial comments were that we're probably not going to get $20,000 again from them, but we may get something. That has not been identified, the amount. However, staff is looking at having some other avenues of revenue, donations from other churches and actually going outside of the city to look at Corona as well because we do serve Corona residents as well.
Is this something that John Tavelloni can fund some of? Or does he already put money into...
I can make him. Absolutely.
I mean, why not ask him? I mean, has he sent anything over to the, to this center for the party partners at all?
No. No.
Then, let's get on...
He has a contributor to the concerts in the park, though.
But that's a totally different thing. He also said he'd give me money for the wheelchair basketball tournament, so let's ask for this, too.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. So... I missed the backup. Okay. This is another request, supplemental request to be added to the CIP budget, but we think we should submit it now. Basically, the playground equipment near Snipes Park is, doesn't meet the current standards and guidelines. No retrofit solution is available for this. Essentially, this equipment is obsolete. And the cost to replace that will be $103,600. What we are proposing is to fund this out of the capital project fund for governmental projects. That fund currently has a balance of $495,000. So, if the city council gives us the go-ahead, we will be adding it to the CIP budget and we'll be discussing it when we come back to discuss the CIP budget in two weeks.
Andy, I think this is a good use of those funds. My concern is, in the follow-up, do we also include this in the maintenance program for those parks? I mean, it's great to install it, but I just want to make sure that we have an, it's included, this kind of expense is included in the maintenance, too, in their budget.
My guess is that the, the existing equipment, equipment does get some level of maintenance. We do a, sorry, we do a monthly, weekly inspections of playground, the tightness bolts, and things like that. But that's only, we try to keep some...
I just, I know you guys do. I just, if we put brand-new equipment, is it going to make your impact greater on what you've already submitted in your budget? I just want to make sure you have enough funding in those budgets to do these maintenance programs when we bring in this equipment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question too. Is it rubber? Do we know if it's rubberized surface? Do we know if it's wood chips?
And currently, there is wood chips replacement in the, in the budget.
Budget allocation, obviously, before the program is implemented, the contract and in the spec color, that will come back to the city council for approval. I guess this will be the proposed structure, new structure?
Those are two different structures, age-appropriate this.
This is an item that, the request here is to draw from general fund $65,000 to paint the Moreno Arena. This one, staff is not recommending it, and that staff being me. And in that, primarily, the reason for that is that as we go into the next slide, based on the supplemental budget requests that, that are being recommended, there simply is not enough money in the general fund, including the projected savings we have by the end of this fiscal year to do that. The only way of doing this particular item would be to dip into the, into the fund balance as, as, as was projected, projected at mid-year.
Can we tag back on the contract manager, or the people that built the thing, to get them to...
And, and I'm going to tell you, I disagree with you on that, Andy. It's since 2001, 2002, that... The primer that's on that steel is, it has two intended uses. It's for transportation and erection, that's it. And it's never been construed as a finished coat of paint. And what my concern is that, where you have various wells exposed, that, and you have rust, those wells are going to crack, or they are cracking. Then in, if you have, in, in any, the design on that structure in a wind, wind event is that, and you don't see it, but those rafters move up to three inches in the wind. And then if you have a seismic event with wells on the primary steel that are, that are failing, you got a major life safety issue there. And it's gone 14 years. So I would respectfully, respectfully disagree with you, and I think we should take that money. And at least put it out to bid and find out where it is compared to the $65,000 budget. And, and that would only be the primary steel. You don't have to paint any of the secondary steel. Because that's all cold rolled stuff.
I'll, I'll agree with Councilman Newton on this, because there's probably been three or 400 good Santa Ana winds that sandblasted that material. And steel rust within five minutes after it gets bare. So this, a lot of that stuff has been bare for a long time. And I'm going to repeat what I've been repeating for 15 years. If this is going to be an equestrian event center, we need to take care of it. We can't have it where it's like somebody made something out of a bunch of cedar posts and the wind's blowing it down like them 4H barns. I think they're an eyesore myself. We don't want our main attraction up there to go to pot on, on the thing. So I think we need to spend the money and make this place look good, because like I said, Patty works hard to book the events up there. But if we have a problem with it, a failure with it, then we can't use it. We might as well bulldoze it down. Thank you.
Andy, I just had a question. On the estimate of $65,000, how much is material and how much is labor?
Uh, Hank?
You didn't get the breakdown? Okay. Just wondering if there's some ways we can work on the materials part with some donations. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, go ahead, Ted.
You know, when this park first, when the, the building, the Moreno Recover was first built, and I put an event on there, one of, somebody, I don't know, one of my truck drivers ended up bumping one of the concrete things and knocked off a couple of rocks. Cost me $350 to glue the rocks back on. Well, since that time, a lot of other rocks have been bumped off, and I don't think they've, anybody else has been changed or charged for any of that up there. So we're not doing our maintenance. And this is what I'm going to continue to harp on. Maintenance now will prevent a lot of trouble later on. And Councilman Newton's right, you got to maintain this stuff. It'll cost you longer and more in the long run not to, not to keep it up, not to put it in prime condition. 14-year-old steel sitting out there exposed to the weather, it's, it needs maintenance. So, and, you know, I, I understand what you're coming, where you're coming from, Andy, is watching this thing, but there are some things that we just come to the point where we have to do it. Thank you.
Can I still tell you a story?
Oh, yeah, sure.
It made me think, just when you mentioned about the decorative rock around the columns, and this is a Hal Clark story, that he went back to Stan Brown one day, because Stan Brown had this lovely architectural rendering, and it showed all those columns encased in rock. And Hal got in his face and scared him, and Stan Brown did all that, installed all that rock into his cost. But it was like, good job, Hal.
So this is...
It didn't, it didn't cost us anything.
This item will be added to the budget, and when we present the final budget, that's what I'm hearing from city council. And it will be drawn from general fund reserves. Thank you. Finally, we have an item in Division, this is actually not Division 730, this is, this is Administration Department. We, this is Economic Development City Clerk, Administration Department. The supplemental budget request here is to convert existing part-time marketing intern to a full-time economic development slash management analyst. The estimated cost for this conversion will be $35,224. I believe this, this, this particular position is important. It will provide entry-level management support in the Administration Department, will allow us to conduct some research and analysis in policy and economic development areas, will provide support for technology implementation and use, i.e. city website, Facebook, city apps, and will assist the city clerk in record management. And most importantly, will also assist with meeting customer requests in the Administration Department. And finally, I believe this position is necessary to ensure consistency in our, our communication protocols. And again, the cost will be $35,224.
Would that, for example, would that take some of the load off of the city clerk in terms of some of the requests and things that she gets? I like this, because it's, again, it makes our message consistent, so I'm, I like this. Anybody else? Next one.
We're almost at the end here, but there is a breakdown of it, a summary of it. That is pretty close to the number of, that we have available. In the week after the second, thirty-seven, this fiscal year, and the, the, this, this year, when we put all of that together, is about $300,000.
Any other comments, council?
You and your staff, great, great presentation. I know how much time you spent on this.
I'll add on to that, Andy, not only the department heads and everything, but everybody in every department, and I notice they've been really busy, had their heads down for the last two months, and it was hard to get an appointment. In fact, I hadn't got to sit down and talk to Brian for about a month and a half, you know, so, but everybody's done a good job. And I think we've really got to appreciate these employees. Unlike Brian and everything, and I know he's gone, he's having a tough time and everything and busy, but it's just great to see everybody working and getting everything done. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Would it be appropriate to send a card to Gina? Anyone else?